Good evening, everybody. John Ryden Buck with the Ontario Area Chamber of Commerce. Happy to be here this evening to host the Candidates Forum for City Council for 2024. We have six candidates. We have four of them that are here tonight. And I would like to thank a few people in the room as we still have people coming in. Our timekeeper, gentlemen. This man right here, Dr. Timber with the Chamber Board. You'll be watching him. You'll have two minutes per question. I have five questions. Really, I have three questions. One of them is an introduction and one of them is a closing. So there's really only three questions. So you'll watch Dr. Brewer and he'll let you know that. I'd like to thank a couple of Chamber Board members that are here. Our past Chair Cathy Asuda, our City Manager, who is an ex-officio on the Chamber Board, Mr. Dan Cummings. And we want to thank everybody for being here. And Alex Upfront here with LivingInTheNews.com will be filming this. We're not broadcasting it live. He'll be filming this and it will be edited to cut my stupid stuff out and your great comments in. And then it will go up on YouTube and Facebook and the socials tomorrow under LivingInTheNews.com and then shared by the Ontario Chamber of Commerce. So if your friends and family aren't here to see you, then that is fine. Welcome, Madam Mayor. So, question number one. Councilman Kirby, please introduce yourself, explain why you're running, and state what committees you serve on currently in our community.
Well, I am John Kirby. I'm a longtime resident of Ontario. I've been involved in the city in one way or the other for about fifty-nine years. And this is the first chance I've ever had to seek public office. This would be my opportunity to seek a second four-year term on the council. And I would tell you, it's probably one of the most interesting jobs that I've ever had. It's highly paid, $125 a month. And but that's not what brings you back. For me, I think probably that has been interesting for me is that I've seen this community grow from around 4,000 when I was a child up to 11,000 today. And yet that's truly not the population of Ontario because it is a town that because of its business acumen brings people here. So far as the committees that I serve on, I'm on the Airport Committee and on the Business Loan Fund Committee. And yet I've been on a couple of ad hoc committees. One rewrote our ordinance. And we have a strategic planning committee that the entire council serves on. And so it gives us an opportunity to look at where we are, where we've been, and where we would like to go. And in doing that, we kind of have to look at our assets and opportunities. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. Would you pass the mic to Councilman Melendez? Eddie, you have two minutes. And would you please introduce yourself, explain why you're running, and state what committees you serve on currently in the city and the community?
Hello. Honored to be here today. My name is Eddie Melendez. I'm a community organizer with the Oregon Food Bank. And I've been a city councillor for almost the last four years. And I'm really honored to be here with y'all today. And the reason I'm running is because I really feel like I represent the folks in our community that go unheard or marginalized and specifically the Latino population here in Ontario. I feel like I bring a voice to the council that helps balance us a little bit better. I think that I'm here to serve the community. I really feel like I'm not a politician, but a public servant. And while the city council has been one of the most challenging things I've ever faced or had to deal with in my life, it's been one of the most rewarding. And every time that I'm in a meeting, whether it be a budget meeting, a city council meeting, I'm so glad to be there because I'm able to add another perspective to, a different voice to the room, to get people to think. And I don't think I'm here to change anybody's minds, but to get people to think about others' point of view and others' lived experience. So it's an honor for me to be here as a Mexican-American here in Ontario, or to represent the Latino community and to serve. And it's something that I really dedicated my life to and it's taken a lot of sacrifice, a lot of time away from my family. Something that sometimes it's a very imbalanced life to serve as much as I do. But I'm honored to be here and I do it for the youth, for the youth to see something that looks like them in these positions. And that one day that our city council could look more representative of the city of Ontario. And I serve on the Diversity Advisory Committee and I also serve on the Business Loan Fund Committee with my great friend John Kirby, Councilor Kirby. Thank you.
Thank you. Will you pass the mic to Martin Hernandez? Martin Hernandez, candidate, would you have two minutes? Would you please introduce yourself, explain why you're running, and state what committees and you serve on in our community?
Hello. I am Martin Hernandez, born here in Ontario, Holy Rosary Medical Center. Just a citizen. I'm not on any boards or anything like that. Just a citizen from Ontario who just sees, has a lot of time on his hands at the current time and just want to help, just want to get a different point of view in the city council and see what I can do for, I don't know about changes, but you know, just hit in a direction that I feel people like me would like to see, like to see go that way. And just help as much as I can. I don't think I represent anybody but citizens of Ontario, honestly. And I don't see anything wrong with Ontario. I just feel like I can help. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Would you pass the mic to Michael Brayden, candidate? Michael Brayden, please introduce yourself, explain why you're running, and state what committees you serve on from the city and or the community?
Hello, Michael Brayden. I'm a self-employed accountant here in Ontario. My wife and I have the pleasure of raising seven children in this community, which should explain desire to make an investment here. I was on city council from 2018 to 2022, lost a very close race to people I consider friends two years ago and thought a break would be nice. But then I started serving on committees again, got reconnected with the Fine City staff that I know and care about. And just you keep taking steps and this is the next step after a little time away. Committees, I am on the Parks Committee, the Business Loan Fund Committee, and the Planning Commission. Why I'm running, simply to provide sound leadership. I don't like to rock the boat and I don't like my boat to be rocked. So I'll put in work, I'll plan, and I'll really, the one thing I learned from serving on city council before was you don't have all the answers. But you work as a group, you listen to community and fellow councillor feedback, and the arrived-at conclusion is usually best for the community.
Thank you. Now we have a kid to my boy. All the way back down here, gentlemen.
Still hot.
Still hot. You good, Alex? Okay. Question number two. Since the Chamber of Commerce is hosting the Candidates Forum this year, did some research and found a question that I thought made a lot of sense for our community. And the question is this: If elected, how would you work with the Chamber to support a strong economic community? Two minutes.
I don't think the events have changed too dramatically. Obviously, in this community, it's all about retail. Always has been since high school, put in the 6% sales tax. Sorry, I butchered. So and the opportunity to get in Ontario is truly based on retail business because that attracts people from, you know, probably a hundred-mile circle around Ontario. That said, then we have the accompanying businesses that, and healthcare and what have you, that sustain that amount of people. I served seventeen years on the hospital board and saw dramatic changes in healthcare. You know, this is when Obamacare came in and then we had COVID and we are where we are today. So in that time, you know, all I can say is we've encouraged growth and it comes naturally. We just don't want to get in their way. I think probably the thing for me is that we've got to have a positive attitude as new business comes to us, tell them they're welcome, do everything we can to get their zoning and everything in place for them to have a business and then see if we can support them.
Thank you. Councilman Melendez, two minutes. How would you work with the Chamber to support a strong economy if elected to the city council?
Thank you for the question. Really quick, I just want to highlight, I appreciate everyone, appreciate everyone up here on this panel and even the folks that are not here, Adriana Contreras and Ramon Palomo. I did this part of my dream to see more folks of color in running for these positions like Martine here and Ramon and Adriana Contreras. I just want to highlight that real quick. And then second of all, I appreciate your question. A couple of years back, maybe about four or five years ago, you asked me at a Chamber of Commerce meeting about the Latino population and businesses attending Chamber of Commerce meetings. And that question always stuck with me. I didn't have the answer then. And I was like, I kind of thought, well, are we putting things out in Spanish, dual language for the Latino business leaders to really understand and get involved? Or how are we being inclusive, how are we reaching out to them? So that question stuck with me for a while and then I got on the city council. And then I saw that every time a business in downtown North Oregon Street moved out, a Latino business moved in. So I started reaching out to the businesses and telling them what do they think about joining a Latino Chamber of Commerce or say, being part of the Ontario Chamber of Commerce? Because they are here and they need to access the funds that the city of Ontario also helps businesses with as well. So going back to your question, I think I'm doing it already. About two weeks ago, we had the first gathering with all the Latino, most of the Latino businesses in Ontario at TBCC, working together with Mayor Villapando, who's the director for the Small Business Centre at TBCC. And so I think it's the first step into bringing in more businesses and being more inclusive. And all it's going to do is help Ontario grow to be a better, more inclusive community for all. Thank you.
Martin Hernandez. So the question is, how would you work with the Chamber to support a strong economy if elected to city council?
Thank you. I believe that, you know, we're in a unique situation here in Ontario where we have a, you know, a community right across the river that can offer different, you know, resources and different tax incentives to have a business over there instead of in Ontario. So I have no philosophy businesses just right across the river for that purpose. And I think we just need to think of different ways of how we can incentivize for businesses to stay here in Ontario and for businesses to want to be in Ontario. I know it's just, we're primarily an agricultural community right now. We have a lot of farms, farm, you know, adjacent businesses that operate in Ontario. If we want to branch out into different markets, different businesses, we need to, you know, incentivize them to want to be here in Ontario. And I just think that if we try to, I don't know, try to develop another board to work on that, we could try and accomplish that. I don't have a clear goal in that or a clear perspective, but you know, I have ideas. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Brayden, how would you work with the Chamber to support a strong economy if elected to city council?
I have the privilege of fourteen years' experience with the SBDC here at Treasure Valley Community College. We provide many events and activities co-sponsored with the Chamber of Commerce. The real impetus behind a strong local viable economy is the support, the networking, and the interaction that the different types of businesses we have here provide with one another. It's not just about businesses and the big box. It's about the small moms and pops, the nonprofits that bring a lot of dollars into our community, the churches that have very, very human-oriented goals but very business-driven needs as well. So I think our Chamber in Ontario is very strong. I've worked with them in many capacities and I'm thankful.
Thank you. You want to hold the mic and go first on the next one?
Oh, yeah, sure.
All right. Well, fast and dead, we'll give John Kirby a chance to think about this one. So, the city always seems to discuss the city's budget. What are your takeaways from the city's current financial situation and how would you like to see it changed? Two minutes. I know that's a lot for two minutes.
Okay. To fledge you with details upfront, I was on the city's budget committee for five years before serving four on city council. So that was nine years studying the city's budget. The difficult part of that, David Armstrong is back here shaking his head, who's been there seven years. It takes you seven years to feel like you can understand and digest the pieces that make up something as complicated as the city's budget. The current situation was we are driven with a lot of service demands. Our roads need attention and care. The core services that we provide are water and wastewater service. The cost of these services continue to increase while our revenue hasn't increased. So the city over the past four years has received a 3% cannabis sales tax. That has brought in roughly $3 million a year. The wish list to spend that $3 million four years ago, it went a long ways. Now, when we look at using it to help fund our police force, road improvements, that $3 million really helped supplement what we have, but it doesn't make or break the situation. So the city is in a balanced budget position and I believe that they're running efficiently and looking for ever more ways to grow in efficiency. Thank you.
Martin Hernandez, the city always seems to discuss the city's budget. What are your takeaways from the city's current financial situation and how would you like to see it changed?
Thank you. For one odd little research, some of this, that's what I've can find online, but I haven't had the experience of these gentlemen up here. Again, it's just, we need, our roads are in disrepair and we need to figure out a way to finance all that. I know the cannabis money is helping, it's helping, and I don't think that's sustainable. I don't think we should look at that for a saveoff for the, you know, for the long time. But I don't, I just, I think that we need to look at other revenues of, I guess, there's other way but taxation. And I don't know how we do that other than, you know, a sales tax or a fuel tax or something. But at the moment, I just don't see how it's sustainable. We are a community that supports a whole region around us. And they're all, they're all coming into town, but they're not paying their, we're not getting that other revenue from them. They are using our town, but they're not paying their fair share to use it. So we'll figure it out. We have to figure it out. I don't think it's sustainable. I don't think it's, you know, I don't think we can continue on this path or we just continue to let our city be used by people that don't live in this community, but they do use it quite a bit. So figure it out. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Melendez, Eddie, the city always seems to discuss the city's budget. What are your takeaways from the city's current financial situation and how would you like to see it changed?
Thank you for the question. So I think some of the ways that, you know, we need new ideas. I've been in the budget meetings, just like Michael Brayden mentioned, that it's taken a while to learn. And this is my fourth year on the budget. And I really feel like this is the first year I really felt a little more comfortable asking questions and proposing new ideas. I think we're, I think that the current council and committee we have, in my opinion, the mindset is to cut, is to cut and, you know, to be prepared for five or 10 years down the road, which is, we need to prepare for five or 10 years down the road. But I, more than cut a program, we need to have new ideas and to bring in revenue. So, for example, we, in the last committee meeting, we were talking about cutting a small program that was helping the youth in a maker's fair. It was a $5,000 cut. And I thought, how can we cut $5,000 if it's not going to save us in the bigger picture? So I brought up an idea because we have a lot of you folks using our roads, running red lights, speeding. So I brought up the idea of camera, a camera system to support law enforcement. And that got shot down in the committee, but then later on, it got brought back up by Councilor Hart. And now we're looking into that. So that could be one small way that we bring in revenue for folks and support police because the police are overburdened, overburdened right now. And instead of having police go out there, it could be a camera that catches or cites, give a citation to somebody in some small way, bring a portion of that revenue of folks using our community back to Ontario. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Kirby, John, the city always seems to discuss, the city always seems to discuss the city's budget. What are your takeaways from the city's current financial situation and how would you like to see it changed?
Most cities in Oregon are living on fuels. They're in worse shape than we are. So much the mandate of laws and everything comes down from the top, no money accompanies it. And so all the cities are living off of what could be possibly property tax like we have. We get over to the coast and they don't have property tax. They live off of tow tax, off of the tourism industry. And so even here, and everybody complains about the property tax, but normally as former councillor Brayden brings up, our property tax, which is about $4.3 million, I believe, won't even pay for our police department, which is about $5.1 or $2 million. And so there's a lot of gap filling that is going to have to be done. We've initiated a strategic planning process. And we know that in our present situation, that around 2026, the two lines are going to cross where the expenses are going to exceed the income. So we're trying to get ahead of it and it will not be a positive thing for anybody. And it will, we'll have to get down and hopefully citizenry will be positive in talking to us so that we can come to a good conclusion for everyone.
Thank you. You hold the mic. Pass it to Eddie and he can go first on this one. You can have some time to think about it. Okay. Two minutes. You did best. Councilman Melendez. This is, this is for all of you, but this, we're going to start with Eddie. If, if the city is floating around a gas tax and conversation is, okay, let me start over. If a city gas tax is floated around in conversation as a means for city revenue, would you support it? Why or why not?
Thank you for the question. Yes, I would support it. I know it's very hard on folks that are, some folks that are living on a budget, a tight budget. But again, I think that if we want more services and we want our streets and our roads to be clean, we want the services to be quick and efficient, we need to be able to pay for those things. And I understand, you know, I hear a lot of folks that are upset with, say, not enough law enforcement or the roads are not clean enough. But those things cost money, so I would support it. And but also with much, what do you call it? Also really trying to think about other ways, not just the gas tax. The gas tax plus other ways to create more revenue for the city of Ontario. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Hernandez, two minutes. If a gas tax is floated as a means of revenue for the city, would you support it or not and why?
Uh, yes. I think you're right, question. Yes, I would support that because we need something. We need more revenue. We're not going to, it's not, like I said earlier, we're not sustainable. We need to get taxes or we need to get money from, from more people in the community. If that's the way right now, I believe it's just a band-aid. But I think we need to, to address this situation with our neighbor across the river. That is a big community who utilizes Ontario quite a bit. No, not quite a bit. We are their lifeline. Where else can they go for their resources? So until we can figure out that situation, I don't believe that we have sustainability in our future. We need to think about that long-term. I think a gas tax would help, but I don't think long-term that that's going to be the solution to our deficit problem. So thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Brayden, Michael, if a gas tax is floated as a means of revenue for the city, would you support it? Yes or no or, or not and why?
Thank you. So serving so many years on the budget committee and on city council, it's probably our biggest role and responsibility that people under glorify, and that is trying to find ways to raise newer additional revenues so that we can provide better services for our community. That always has an offset when you identify a source of revenue. People are going to question what you do with it. Does the vitality that that brings offset the nuisance or inconvenience of a tax? Would I support a gas tax? Yes. Why? Because it's not novel, it's not new. Legislation is already in place for us to opt into it. I believe Ontario Charter says it would have to go to a general election ballot to be passed by the citizens as well. So the power doesn't rest with us to say, stamp it, yep, we want that money. The other, probably the greatest pro of a gas tax is when you slow down and consider who's paying the tax and what is their willingness to pay it. It primarily doesn't tax Ontario residents for their small portions of gas. It's the interstate corridor that also taxes our police force. They provide shopping at Walmart, but the dollars don't always stay here. So charging, charging a gas tax there is, is an equitable way, as Martine says, to support the Ontario residents by having some people who pass through and use our services pay a portion.
Councilman Kirby, John, if a gas tax is floated as a means for city revenue, would you support it? Why or, and, or not and why? Let me read that one more time.
No, I got it. No. But I would support a fuel tax. And there's a difference because the biggest revenue can be obtained, as Michael said, from the interstate. But that's going to mean it's diesel, it's fuel. We can't make enough money off the gas to be a part of it. And, you know, but there's got to be a lot of research that goes into this. You know, and I can see my friends that are fuel distributors right now writing my name and address down. But again, we've got to spread the, the opportunity to help balance our budget out. Because the way it is now, it's always falling back on the taxpayers of Ontario. And you know, when we have 44,000 citizens in the middle of the day and 11,000 citizens at night, we're taxing the 11,000 that have a bed here. And somehow, we've got to be able to spread out the opportunity to help support a community to other places and other people. You know, our, our citizens have carried the burden too long and it's time to do something different.
Thank you. Last question, and you need to start it. Close remarks. What else would you like to share with the audience that's here tonight and the people online? Two minutes.
Well, councilors get phone calls from all of you. The biggest thing that's asked of us is, I don't like the weeds in our town. Or if somebody's parking their motorhome down the street and, or it possibly might involve homeless. And, you know, I think that it's something that's been difficult for us to have. We have an ordinance officer right now who is doing a really good job, but she's just one person. And I'd like to see something done in the community that would involve you to citizenry. You're the ones that would like to see our citizen, our city look better. And because it is the front door of our community that people see when they come here. And you're wanting to complain about it. And I think- And I think doing something like a spring cleanup, that we're not dedicated to one home to paint anything else, but it's just a thought. I'd like to plant that seed and see if we couldn't get the people of town to step forward and help our ordinance officer. We could identify some of the sore spots, people who don't have the money to, to clean up their residences and see if we can't clean up our community and make it a more welcoming place to be. Thank you.
Councillor Lindas, two minutes. Closing remarks. What else would you like to share with the audience and the people online?
Thank you. Once again, I really feel like I'm not a politician, I'm a public servant. You can catch me one day on Tuesday evening at the City Council meeting and then the next meeting, doing a community service project with some of my boxing kids and some of the other kids that are from underserved communities. I really feel like Ontario's given me so much. From, from the old Oregon Human Development Corporation, giving me the opportunity to get my Wellies Certificate at TBCC. From TBCC, giving me the opportunity to get a well, a great education in the local community. To all the jobs that I've had from the Juvenile Department to Community in Action. All these different roles have really helped me see things on a higher level, all the way to City Council. They say one mountain top is just the bottom of the next. And every time I'm exposed to something new, I can't unsee it and I feel more of an obligation and a duty to serve our community. And of course, it's, it's been a long, tough road, very difficult at times, very stressful at times. But I really feel like if you, if you want true leadership that, that can take action and that can speak up to things that are said that could be wrong or hurtful, I'm your, I'm your city councillor. If you want me to somebody to step up, to call for decorum or to, to be inclusive with their language or caring about others, I'm the city councillor that has proven that over and over and over. So I believe that I'm right for the city of Ontario and I believe on the future of Ontario. Thank you.
Thank you. Candid Hernandez. Closing remarks. What else would you like to share with this audience and people online? Two minutes.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like just to, just to say, I've lived in Ontario since I was a child. I grew up here, stayed here. I moved away for a few years. I've always come back to Ontario. I've always been here for, my family's here, family settled here in my seventies, late seventies. And so, I've been here, I love Ontario. I've had plenty of opportunities to move away, planned opportunities to move to Napa. And now I'm here with my family. I care about this community. The reason I'm here is because I have plenty of time now. I feel like I can be an asset to this council if voted in. And I just, I just think I can do something to help lead Ontario into its next chapter now, so. I appreciate, you know, the support I've gotten from the community, from my friends and family and from all of you. And thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Braden. Closing remarks. What else would you like to share with this audience here and the people online? Two minutes.
I, I really like to remind everybody in our community that we each have an opportunity to serve. Serving is not easy. It's a commitment of time, of away from your family, service away from money-making endeavors. So at these candidates forums, this is my third now, I really like to express thankfulness to you concerned citizens who are here to hear about the candidates because you spread your, your network in the community to help people understand about our take on these issues. But I'm thankful for those gentlemen up here with me this evening who are also willing to step up and serve. I lost last time to three people who I felt were very willing and capable to serve and I'm thankful for them doing so and I'm thankful for these candidates here today. I believe that's my closing remark. Thank you.
Thank you. So I would like to let everybody know, there are two other candidates and this was really exciting for our community. I felt like when Tories sent me the names, there was six spots, or three spots and six candidates. And that has not happened in our community for many years. And so, we're really excited that the momentum is going that way. So Ramon Palomo, who is unable to be here tonight, is also a candidate. And Adriana Contreras, who is actually at a, across the state at a business meeting, really wanted to be here, but she wasn't unable to be here too. So my closing remarks, you got my two-minute signs. I'm kidding. I need three right now, Mary.
I, I will, I will keep your time.
So, on behalf of the Ontario Chamber of Commerce, thank you for, and the other two who are on here, for your service, your continuing service or your new service to continue to make our community a better place. Thank you for the outreach that you all have done. Thank you for being here this evening. I would say, I just will share this because it was mentioned during one of the answers by Councillor Lindas about SBDC and a cohort of Latino chamber. At our last Chamber Board meeting two weeks ago now, the Chamber Board has agreed that we will be starting a Latino armed cohort of the Ontario Area Chamber of Commerce. And so we were, we're in meetings with Mayor Tom and the group to move forward, put the pieces together for translators and things like that. But that is something that is moving forward and I'm quite excited about it. Again, I would like to thank everybody for being here tonight. We have the room until about 7:30 and it is 7:08. So if they're willing, y'all can come up and talk to them or you can mix and mingle with them and have questions. Again, thank you to LivingInTheNews.com. Y'all go there and see it as Alex will share. Thank you Board Member Dr. Brewer for filming. Thank you Mayor and City Council for being here. We appreciate that. Thank you City Manager Dan Cummings and Passport Chair Kathy Asuda from my board. Y'all have a good night.